Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:27. We are broadcasting on all platforms.
Oh, I don't know.
Someone did one of those.
Why?
A pool or something.
Um, like a week or two.
That's on the other side.
Do you have your? But. No, I don't. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, please, I, you know, I didn't want to say anything.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say something, but. Mayor, good call.
I have no patience for this non-working clock. Hi.
Yeah, thank you.
Two more minutes. I'm just watching the clock.
It's a totally different one. It looks pretty good.
I like that place. We'll go there.
Hey Ethan, pose it. Gotcha.
I don't know. You have to check out.
Gotcha.
You ready? Joanna, are you ready? I have 5:30. Are you ready? You ready, clerk? The February 4th, 2025 meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, will you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Gregory. Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase. Alderwoman Nitrano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Bush, you have a quorum.
And I'm present as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Civility pledge. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Uh, we have two presentations slash proclamations. The first one is going to be the Lincoln Magnet Seventh Grade Girls Basketball Team. We're gonna call them in, and Chief of Staff Disco, if you could bring up their proclamation, please. Uh, Alderman Gregory, do you want to step down since they're in your ward?
That's for three, thank you.
No, Magnum.
Lincoln Magnet is not.
I know, I've got it listed.
Well, China's Black History Month.
Absolutely.
Pardon me. Go ahead and come up this way if you want, ladies. With your coach, yeah.
You're taller than a couple of these.
Funny guy. Very much.
Hey, move down. Move down closer to us.
Lincoln Magnet?
Yeah.
I'll let you kind of hold them, and then we'll hand them out. Welcome, ladies. So today, we're gonna recognize the Lincoln Magnet Seventh Grade Girls Basketball Team, and I have Alderman Gregory up here with me, because this is in his ward their school is. So the Lincoln Magnet Seventh Grade Girls Basketball Team has made history by becoming the first team in the school's history to place in the state championship tournament. And under the exceptional leadership of head coach Shaquilla Lee, assistant coach Dominique Lee, and assistant coach Regina Porter, the team demonstrated extra nor- extraordinary skill, teamwork, and perseverance throughout the season. And the team had a dominating season, congratulations, uh, achieving an outstanding undefeated record leading up to the Class 3A Girls Basketball State Championship Tournament. And whereas the Lincoln Magnet Seventh Grade Girls Basketball Team showcased remarkable athleticism and leadership, ultimately securing a third-place finish in the Class 3A State Championship Tournament with an impressive final record of 20 and 1. And we're not done, but we're gonna applaud you for your record. Great job with that. Whereas the following student athletes demonstrated commitment, discipline, and sportsmanship throughout the season. Joy Bardwell, number 24. And when I say it, if you're here, raise your hand. Joy Bardwell, number 24. Amari Chandler, number 14. Leila Hulam, number 5. Kalise Jones, number 4. Morgan Jones, number 31. Hannah Nichols, number 32. Lydia Nichols, number 12. Zoe Williams, number 10. Rachel Thomas, number 13. And Alicia McBride, number 22. And if anyone else comes in that's in this, wait, come back here. Whereas the dedication and support of Lincoln Magnet Principal Nicole Hyon, Lincoln Magnet Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Brian Hoffich, and Springfield Ball Charter Principal Hewitt Gage have played an integral role in the team's success. And whereas the city of Springfield recognizes the hard work, dedication, and sportsmanship of the Lincoln Magnet Seventh Grade Girls Basketball Team, coaches, and school leadership in bringing pride and honor to their school and this community. Therefore, I, Misty Buscher, Mayor of the City of Springfield, especially with Alderman Gregory and the rest of the City Council, do hereby recognize and commend the Lincoln Magnet Seventh Grade Girls Basketball Team for their outstanding achievement as Class 3A state champions in their tournament. So, congratulations. So Chief of Staff Disco has certificates for you to all take as well with the city seal on them. So congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, so. You wanna take a pic, say? So you wanna take some photos? Do the parents wanna come up and take some photos real quick? Get up, yeah, come on up. This is their day. This is their day, so.
All the Bardwells have a state champion. All of them do. That's right.
Oh, you're good.
Give me that one more.
Let me push it with the. See, that's my proclamation?
Yes.
Alright.
Now, the. Can you?
No, I'm telling them where that's true.
I want to come in. Y'all wanna come in?
Oh, we're glad to get all the parents to get in.
Yes. This could be possible with all these guys. Getting them to practice too. Making sure their grades are. Sorry.
Alright, one, two, three.
Alright.
Alderman Williams, you stay down here with me. Disco, do you have another proclamation for me? Sorry, congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, I'll be at church again. You know I will.
Alright, I'll see you there.
Then look, look real happy about that.
Mike. Don't know what he's doing, but we need him.
Yeah, okay. Here we go.
Okay, now we're gonna call up the Washington Middle School Eighth Grade Girls Basketball Team, and we have Alderman Williams here, because that's in his ward.
Great times.
Don't go through it.
Alright. The Washington Middle School Eighth Grade Girls Basketball Team has demonstrated exceptional dedication, perseverance, and teamwork throughout the season. And their hard work and determination, the team secured a sectional championship and advanced to the state tournament for the first time since 1990, marking a historic achievement for Washington Middle School. And the outstanding student athletes who have contributed to this momentous occasion include, and if I say your name and you're here, raise your hands so everyone knows you're here, Aleah Jarrett. Hunt. Lyanna Wilson. Lyanna Wilson. Natalie Trader. Carlina Binion. Janaya Waters. Makiah Crump. Harmony Scott. Mariana Johnson. Amaya Kidd. And Precious Westbrook. Not here either. Whose talent and dedication have brought great pride to their school and the Springfield community. And this achievement would not have been possible without the guidance, mentorship, and leadership of their coaches Mitch Alexander and Nico Gerard, who have instilled in these young athletes the values of hard work, sportsmanship, and perseverance. And the success of the Washington Middle School Eighth Grade Girls Basketball Team serves as an inspiration to all young athletes in our community, showcasing the power of determination and teamwork in achieving great success. Therefore, I, Misty Buscher, Mayor of the City of Springfield, with Alderman Roy Williams in Word 3, and the rest of the City Council, do hereby and recognize and commend the Washington Middle School Eighth Grade Girls Basketball Team for their remarkable achievements. So congratulations. Congrats. Congratulations, congratulations, and congratulations. And then we have certificates that we'll give your coaches for each of you to keep as well, since the coach gets the big fringe. Do some pictures. Is that alright? Do any of the parents want in with this one too?
Y'all stop with this.
Dinner's on the run. You did all those things. I didn't know what it was like.
Yeah. Get in here, yeah.
Mike, you coming in? You have somebody you'll find. You got it turned on?
Come on, mama.
Come on in.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good luck in isolation, okay? Where are we gonna go? Lampier? Yay! I'm a lion too.
I guess. I can't think of these.
I think she wants the coaches. Want her coaches up here?
Does he harass you?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Alright, let's rock.
So you're family, that's why he harasses.
Good luck. Yeah. Bye, see ya. You know it. You know it. These guys are awesome. Get a picture of her feet. Good job, mama. I know, I know it's a lot.
See you later. Yes.
Congratulations.
Oh, okay, I was gonna help. You're welcome.
There, doesn't have to do this.
Is that look that right?
Is the toast be back in there?
Oh, maybe this, maybe this must be here.
The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the January 21st, 2025 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So move.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yep, Mayor, I think there's an amendment to one of the ordinances.
Yeah, we'll do this vote, and then we'll do that.
Yes, ma'am.
If that's okay?
That's perfect.
Perfect, thank you, sir. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And to Alderman Donlin's point, the Chair will now entertain a motion to amend Agenda Item Number 2025-028 to correct the amount of a grant. The ordinance originally read a sub-recipient agreement with Springfield School District 186. The amount was wrong, so we need to adjust it to say $251,000 in the corrected version pursuant to ICJIA Grant Number 102501 for the Springfield Police Department.
We'll move, Mayor.
So we have a motion and a second, and then Alderman Donlin, you have signed up to speak?
I just made the motion, Mayor.
Okay, never mind then. Any other discussion on the amended amendment for this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda Items 2024-333 and 2024-540 remain tabled or in committee.
Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion. We bring, uh, bring out 2024-540 out to debate, please.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to pull 2024-540 out of committee and put it on debate. Um, that is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to accept and execute in supplemental appropriation for a Route 66 grant agreement beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $300,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor to put this, uh, pull this out of committee and put on the debate agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Joanna, do you want to go ahead and do this one out of order? First, okay. So we're gonna go out of order and do this one first, or I'm sorry, it isn't out of order, it's 2024, isn't it? So the first item on the agenda on the debate agenda is 2024-540, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to accept, execute, and supplementally appropriate Route 66 grant agreement beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $300,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Make a motion for passage, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance, any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is Item Number 2025-022, an ordinance authorizing additional payment to Aaron Fox Schiff LLP as outside counsel for assistance with the coal combustion residuals regulations and the utility's flue gas desulfurization sludge landfill in the amount of $100,000 for a total amount not to exceed $195,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Item Number 2025-022 on final passage.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the ordinance, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is 2025-026, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of Grant Number 25-203392 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $1,300,000 and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,300, $1,300,000 to be used for preliminary and design engineering services for the Third Street Greenway Project. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place Agenda Item Number 2025-026 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Alderwoman Nitrano.
Mayor, um, so I had asked to have this on discussion um, because I had a few questions about, um, the process. There's my mic. Um, so this, uh, grant is, um, for us to, basically fund the supplemental agreement with Hanson Professional Services that we signed, um, in October of last year, correct?
Dr. Fokes, do you want to come up on this? I don't know that anyone from Hanson is here. I don't see anyone.
Oh, I don't, it's not really a question for them. It's a question for you or Corporation Counsel. We voted.
Well, it's a Public Works project.
Well, okay. So my question, though, is we voted on the contract with Hanson on October 24th, and we signed a contract with Hanson, I'm assuming around October 24th, and we're now just getting the funding for that agreement. And whenever that agreement was put on final passage, I asked, where is the grant? Do we have the funding? This is the funding. So I'd just like some clarity on how this happened, why this happened, is this normal procedure now for us to sign contracts without them being funded?
Alderwoman, I didn't receive this question in advance of tonight. I'm happy to go through all the different funding that we have uh, on this project, the different contracts that we've signed and, and receive an answer. I know that you said you pulled it because you had questions. Happy to answer those, but I don't have that file in front of me. If this question is directed at me, um, I'm, I don't know if Public Works received your questions, but I'm happy to answer them when I can prepare.
Yeah, sure. It's, um, it's definitely not a Public Works question. I asked them in October about the grant, and they let me know the grant was coming. And I asked the mayor and you about the funding, and I was made to believe that we already had the funding or some such thing like that. So I just, I'm just saying, I have seen up here the process be that before we enter into contracts or decide to spend some money, we have the grants in place first. So I just want to flag this for everyone, um, So I just want to flag this for everyone, um, and, and let it be known that I, I don't even, I don't know if this was a mistake or if we just do things out of order, or what have you.
Alderwoman, this is a Public Works project, so all the communication goes through Public Works, not the Office of Corporation Counsel or the Office of the Mayor, so it is a Public Works question.
Well, I, I've received my answer from them. I, I, I didn't think that they had the power to put things on the agenda or not.
Each agency does send their ordinances through for the agenda, that is how that works.
And this is a reimbursable grant, so we have to expend the dollars and be reimbursed by, by the state of Illinois.
Sure.
And, uh, under this particular grant, uh, all the, all the, the monies that would be available to us have to be expended by the thirty first of June of this year.
Understood, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Alderman, Alderwoman Notriano, are you done with your questions?
Yep.
Alderman Gregory.
No, thank you, um, I, I know we had a couple of questions, um, about this particular project on the Nineteenth Street Rail. I, I will say that I, I've had a lot of those questions answered from various people, including Hanson, and I appreciate them for that. I am comfortable voting on, on this particular item. I think, um, and, and not to, um, put words in Jennifer's mouth, but I think what she is, um, articulating is that, at the difference in, in other grants, and I, you know, would, if Hanson's doing the work, do they have to fork out the one point three million, um, first and then get it back? So I, I, I think that's more so, i- if, if I'm correct, uh, of what she was saying.
A good question.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory, anything else?
Nope, nope, uh, I'm comfortable, uh, with this. Like I say, the Third Street Rail, um, is important to, to our city's growth as well as the Nineteenth Street tracks, and, and we're gonna keep pushing to, to, um, see a reality to what we do for the Nineteenth Street tracks and, and really bring it in, um, bring it in so we can finish continuing to redevelop our community, so I appreciate it, one, thank you.
I agree with you, Alderman, and I know Hanson's very passionate about the Nineteenth Street tracks, so thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. It's my, my recollection that, that Hanson brings a lot of these grants to us. They know about them before they, you know, w- when we, when we signed the contract. I, I don't know if they've done any work that we, they build the city be- since they know we didn't pass it yet. That would be, excuse me, that'd be more for, for them, but, um, you know, the fact that they knew that this was coming, you know, I, I think that they're, they're fully, you know, we do this, we've done this in the past, I know. A lot on, on railroads, a lot on, uh, the streets, it seems like. We, we get the grant afterwards, you know, we get things rolling, then we get the grant afterwards because we know it's coming, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, looks like, uh, Budget Director Metzger has something to add to that, Alderman Hanauer?
So I've seen that as well, and it's due to preliminary engineering. So before we get the grant awarded, we have preliminary engineering that is included with the grant application. So like when we did the Tiger Grant, we started that in two thousand thirteen. We didn't have a signed agreement until two thousand fifteen, but we had incurred preliminary engineering. So it's, and this is preliminary engineering related.
Thank you. Uh, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Alderman Hanauer, were you done? I apologize, Alderwoman Purchase.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I thought I cleared.
I agree with.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, I agree with Alderman, um, Hanauer, but I also just want the record to reflect, Mayor, I spoke to you earlier, this is in my ward, I'm all for this project going forward, but I understood what Alderman Gregory and Alderman Williams were saying, and I, I preach on education, so if Hanson can definitely bring forward, when they get notification, as you just said, they know when it's coming, to just let us know ahead so that we all are on the same page. I think that'll be, uh, good because I think that's where the concerns came from, too. When we first brought this ordinance forward, Rand Sean was like, hold up, we trying to figure out what's going on with Nineteenth Street, so I just think that would be helpful, but as they know, I am Team, uh, Greenway.
Well, you know, we split it, so I'm.
Thank you.
And Alder, yes, Alderwoman, and Alderman Gregory, if I'm invited to Hanson for a Nineteenth Street meeting, I will make sure you know about it.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
You're welcome, and Alderman Williams, too, if he would like to come. Alderwoman Notriano.
Uh, yes, thank you, I am also in support of this project, and I made that known in October when we voted, voted to, uh, fund the contract with Hanson. So I'll give everybody a, a little bit of background on this. This is actually a supplemental agreement to a agreement that we signed in February of two thousand twenty four. We, uh, that was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar agreement with Hanson that was for the preliminary engineering, and, um, we paid for that with motor fuel tax. So again, I, I'm just saying, uh, I've sat up here and heard a lot of people ask questions and quibble about grants of a lesser dollar value than one point three million. And whenever this was brought up in October, no questions, I was the only one with questions. And, uh, like I said, I, I, I want to highlight this because I'm afraid that there's a bit of a double standard here in, in how we deal with allocation of grant funds. We are willing to sign a contract with Hanson and allow them, I imagine, to, uh, incur some expenses related to the engineering, uh, Phase One, which is what this is, wi- without having the cash on hand from the state, and that's, that's my bottom line, okay?
Any other discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the ordinance, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with eight voting yes and one voting present. The next item on the agenda is Item Number two thousand twenty five dash zero two seven in ordinance amending Chapter Thirty, Section thirty point zero four of the nineteen eighty eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to an appointment procedure to fill a vacancy in the Office of Mayor, City Treasurer, or City Clerk. The Chair will entertain a motion to place this Agenda Item Number two thousand twenty five dash zero two seven on final passage. So moved. We have a motion and a second to put to final passage, any discussion? Seeing none?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, Alderwoman Conley.
And, and I apologize.
It's okay.
I was not well last week and, um, unable to even call in, didn't want to bother you guys with that. So, um, just some questions, um, if I could, about this. Mayor, do you mind if Alderwoman responds when I?
It is your floor, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. So, um, my only concern with this ordinance is the time that it takes to fill these executive level positions. It's, it's basically like a three-week process, which I appreciate the, the level of detail that went into that. I think it's good that we have a procedure in place that's, that's maybe a little spelled out a little more clearly than, um, since there were, there were, um, concerns with the la- with how this happened. My concern with that is three weeks is a long time to go without either a mayor or a clerk or a treasurer. So, um, I would like to see, maybe we take this, um, and, I don't know what, what other communities you looked at to base this on?
None, I, I mean, it's, uh, yeah, none.
Okay, I, and my, the, my reason for this concern is like, um, I don't know, because if other communities maybe do like an immediate appointment of an interim person who can act with the full authority of, of that position while this process plays out. I, I just, I do worry, three weeks is, is a, is a long time to go without, especially, well, I mean, even the treasurer, we remember when, in her budget presentation, how many millions of dollars they process on a regular basis. So, um, you know, I'd be interested to see if maybe we could add, either add some language to authorize an immediate, um, interim person who may or may not be a candidate for the final position, that's, I would be neutral in that. Or, or maybe, maybe hold on to this just for two weeks, see how other communities that are similar to ours. You know, like, like Aporia has a city manager, right? And that, they are, the, their model is different than ours. But, but another community that has like that strong mayor, um, model, how, what sort of steps they put in to fill that gap, because the three weeks is a big time.
I, I will say that, um, this is based on our consent decree, which is unique to Springfield, and, um, so I, I don't know, um, a- about, um, adding, I mean, I was under the impression that, like, we really couldn't by ordinance do anything contra to what the consent decree says.
So would, um, can I just ask, would, uh, an interim mayor or treasurer or clerk be? Because I don't want, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to deviate from the consent decree, so would that, would that create a deviation? Or is that something that, I guess my concern is, again, three weeks is a long time, and, and
I mean, is it?
It is, for, for a mayor, for treasurer, for clerk, yeah.
Right, but there, there are professional staff in the treasurer's office, there's a deputy treasurer and I know a manager.
Are they authorized?
And there's a deputy clerk, and, um, I'm, I'm sure that there are folks on staff in the mayor's office, and there's a mayor pro tem who could keep the lights on for three weeks for us to allow public input on a citywide office.
Again, I have no concerns with, with having this be, that, that process be a little more like, I think, um, I mean, obviously, there were issues, that people were, you know, the way this, this went for the clerk was not, um, I mean, I, I had an understanding about what it was, but clearly that wasn't shared with everybody, so that's not my concern. My concern is, um, and, and I don't know, Corporation Counsel, and I apologize, I meant to ask you about this, but is there, would having an interim person serve while this process plays out constitute a deviation from the consent decree, do you think?
So under our consent decree, um, just to be clear, we do have a mayor pro tem, and a mayor pro tem is appointed by the mayor. So if anything happens to the mayor, that mayor pro tem steps in and operates as the mayor during that time. The mayor pro tem can also vote in an aldermanic capacity. Now, there is no provision for a similar thing with, for the treasurer or clerk. So with those two, uh, provisions, there, we, our consent decree doesn't forbid an interim clerk or an interim, um, treasurer from being appointed. This ordinance doesn't have that, we can, but it's not in there right now. But there's nothing that would prohibit it under our consent decree.
Okay, I mean, I just, oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman, did you?
Yes, um, thank you, Alderwoman Conley, for bringing this up publicly for transparency purposes. Alderman Gregory had brought it up before, and Alderwoman Notriano, I said I support you wholeheartedly. So I think, would you be okay with the amendment coming in that Sean had said where we would have the deputy treasurer and the deputy clerk come in and have that in writing in this ordinance? Would that s- be sufficient for you?
Is, is that something we could do?
Yeah, that would be, um, a very simple amendment to do to this. We, uh, we could just be simple language that says, um, during this, as the city council is following this procedure, the deputy treasurer and the deputy, uh, the deputy city clerk shall be vested with the powers of the elected positions and serve in that capacity.
So help me out, how do we bring that amendment forward from Sean and myself to help, uh, Alderwoman?
Alderwoman, let me, let Alderwoman Conley finish, then I'll come to you and we'll do the amendment, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, Alderwoman Conley, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and then, thank you, oop, now I'm breaking things, this is why I'm not supposed to touch them. Thank you, and, and Alderman Gregory, um, I appreciate you'd kind of thought about that, too, because, um, so would, the, the language would be that we would, um, and I guess I need to know, did the, um, I even asked the clerk, does a deputy clerk or the treasurer, do your deputies have signature authority for your office?
When I took over the office, there was no deputy clerk, and there, and there was, there was no chain of command. We, we are, as you know, restructuring the office to in- initiate the deputy clerk's position, and, and with a clear chain of command, it'd be a lot easier, but right, when I walked to the door, there was nothing.
And can I ask?
I had to rely on staff to be able to.
Sure, and then, um, treasurer, I'm not gonna twist all the way around, but, um, is your deputy treasurer authorized? Does, do they have signature authority?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, any other questions?
No, um, that's, that was, that was my biggest concern, was just that immediacy, um, because it is good to have that out, that, that, that conversation and have a more, you know, engaged process. But time doesn't stand still, and I think, Mayor, you've noticed some things can come up without any notice.
Yes, ma'am.
Where we definitely would need someone, um, in that position. Does the mayor pro tem, and I've not served in that position, do they have signature authority for the mayor by being named as pro tem, or is that something that would also need to be included in the ordinance?
Uh, it, it would not need to be included in the ordinance, the mayor pro tem does not have signature authority while the mayor has the capacity to serve as the mayor, but if the mayor is, for some reason incapacitated, the mayor pro tem can step into that position.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Yes, so, um, Alderman Gregory, would you like me to make the amendment, or would you like to make the amendment?
Let me, let's go.
Okay, so we would like to make an amendment to include the deputy treasurer and the deputy clerk to be included in the language of Ordinance two thousand twenty five zero twenty seven.
Second.
So we have an amendment and a second to include the deputy clerk, just let, step in for the clerk?
Yes.
And the deputy treasurer to step in for the treasurer, and it looks like, uh, Corporation Counsel Mordock has been writing, so I think he's got your amendment written for you. Yes, ma'am. Uh, any discussion on the amendment? I know I have others signed up to speak, but right now, just the amendment. Does it, just kind of wave your hand if you have discussion on the amendment. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor, um, in the event of the clerk, let's just say that, the, the person that kind of served as a deputy clerk walked out with the clerk, what do you do then?
Well, how long were we without a clerk?
Alderwoman, Alderwoman, it's, this clerk.
Well, we weren't, weren't that long because we got it taken care of before, we were, we had a new clerk within a week. This, this is three weeks, you had two, two people down there, three weeks would have been, been forever for them. And you're, you're expecting two, two staff members to, to, to run the whole, whole show. I don't, I don't know what, you know, what offices have staff members running the show without, without anybody to supervise.
So Alderman, are you asking Alderwoman Purchase, uh, on her amendment to include something else?
Well, I, I mean, you know, I think, I think if anything, we need to hold this, figure it out. Doing this stuff on the fly is, is not correct.
Click to speak, I'll get you in a second on that, we're just doing the amendment right now. Treasurer Redpath Faker had her hand up, and then, uh, also Alderman Gregory, you want to talk on the amendment?
Please.
Okay, go ahead, treasurer.
So at administration change, it's often that the deputy treasurer is no longer, they leave with the administration. So that could be three months, six months, depending on how long it takes to find a qualified candidate. So in that event, there's no deputy treasurer, the city treasurer, um, gets ran over by a bus or something horrible happens. What in the language of this ordinance do you do next?
Well, I hope your deputy would stay if anything happened to you.
Well, no, the deputy, the deputy leaves at administration change, you have no deputy. So the tr- something happens to the treasurer, so then what do you do? You don't have a deputy, you don't have a treasurer. Okay, so then.
It's an office manager, right?
Right, but that's not in your ordinance. And then, there was an administration, two administrations ago, that had no deputy for multiple years.
So if we put in the ordinance, they need to have a deputy, right? Is that the?
Well, we could put, there, there are multiple ways to address this. We can require them to have a deputy, uh, we can have, uh, in the event there is no deputy, the city council shall appoint an interim. There are, there are multiple ways, yeah, to address it, depending on how, how the council wants to.
I guess I, I better sign up.
Okay, Alderman Gregory on the amendment, and then Alderwoman Purchase, I think you just heard the Corporation Counsel has something you could add to your amendment possibly, but Alderman Gregory.
Yes, um, on the actual amendment, I, I'm in agreement with, with trying to, um, assign someone in these positions to take over, and I think in, in some of these extreme circumstances, uh, I know the, the clerk has, I'm just reading through some of this, um, again, but, um, I know the clerk has plans to do his registrar and get a deputy clerk and things of that nature, so he has, um, upgraded that office right, right now. If an event, I mean, we may or may not be here when this happens again, I know it doesn't happen too often, right? And, um, you know, if we, if any of us are here, then we, we know the importance of filling that seat. This thing doesn't have to take three weeks. Um, I, I think the, the main portion of this ordinance was, um, how soon we advertised it, how long we gave, um, to, to receive some, um, resumes before we made our decision. I think that's really the cuss of it, I know there's some other things in here that we have some thoughts on, and I'm, I'm, I'm open to, to listen to these things, but I don't think we hold it, I think we handle business tonight and finish this thing going out. Thank you. finish this thing on out, thank you.
So Alderwoman Purchase, we're on your amendment still, do you want to speak on that anymore?
No, I think I saw Alderman Carlson, and then I, I saw what you said too with Corporation Council, Mordock, I wanted to hear what else that he wanted to add.
Okay, so Alderman Carlson, are you on the amendment, or the ordinance itself?
Lot of move, lot of moving parts right now, so I'll talk about the ordinance itself.
Okay, we'll finish the amendment, Alderwoman Conley?
Yeah, thank you, so Corporation Council, kind of what you mentioned was, was the same concept I was thinking of, was that if, you know, maybe we can't, you know, we can't direct someone to have a deputy if maybe their budget can't sustain it or something, but, so, in the case that there is no, no one to step in, there is neither a deputy in either, in either office, or if the mayor pro tem is in the same car accident with the mayor, but you know, if, we just need to have order, I just, I, I think we need to be, be careful that we don't tie another council's hands by saying it has to be this way, but just say, if, you know, if, if none of these other backup people are available, then the council shall appoint, shall appoint an interim person while the replace, while this process plays out, so I, I just want to, because, you know, we can't guarantee it's just one person that gets hurt, and then again, I'm not, this is worst-case scenario stuff, but I just want to make sure that there's that contingency to allow a future council the ability, and I believe, Alderman Gregory, is that kind of the flexibility you were thinking of?
I, I, I have to tip my hat to Alderwoman Purchase and Alderwoman Nutriano, I just thought it was important for me to support them on this ordinance as, as, you know, a ward that was birthed out of the consent decree, I, I definitely wanted to support them in this and, and make sure that I gave my thoughts on it, absolutely.
Okay, so Alderwoman Purchase, would that, would that be good?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, that that would exhaust all options before we got to city council of us making an agreement, that's what you're saying, so like if there wasn't something in place, that it does come back to the body and then we agree to move forward, but before then, we, if those
If they exist, then, then that's an automatic kind of a thing, yeah.
Are you okay with that, Alderwoman Nutriano?
So, we're just doing your amendment then?
Well, this discussion's only on our amendment.
Yes, discussion, but I, I, if you're okay with it, I would like to add in her part too, so if there is not a deputy clerk, or not a deputy treasurer, but as clerk
Or not a mayor pro tem.
Or, but, but we have that in place already.
If that person is there, that's what I mean.
Right, so if, if something happens with all the scenarios that they said that we would come back to the body of the council, but if those positions are already in place, which clerk, I, I want to call him Chuck, but Redpath has said that he's already moving the office forward with having a deputy clerk, so that person would be in position, so it would go to them first, but if that should not happen, then it comes back to the body of this council.
Okay.
To a point.
To a point, and I, I think that's pretty reasonable, but it's up to you.
Yeah, so, um
And we need it to pass.
Yeah, so, um, this ordinance is only going to happen and, or kick into effect in very rare occasions, ideally, we would like to hold an election when a citywide office becomes available, I would be, I would be leery of having anything that allows an appointment of someone interim, because that could then prejudice who is ultimately put into that spot, and if the interim is allowed to be appointed this, with the same swiftness as the, the clerk was appointed a few weeks ago, then this is all moot.
So I, I guess that's where Corporation Council comes in, that's where you speak to this.
So, right now, I have two additional items that we've discussed, and then perhaps to address that, we could add a provision on the end if it's the, if it's the desire of the council, so, right now, I would add subsection two, which would state, in the event a vacancy occurs in the position of treasurer or city clerk, the deputy treasurer or deputy city clerk, as the case may be, shall be authorized to serve as interim treasurer or interim clerk, and be authorized to execute the powers and duties of the respective office during the period the city council is following the procedures set forth in subsection A1 of this section, so what that means is, if something happens to the treasurer or the city clerk, the deputy steps in to take that only for the period that we're following this application process that's being laid out, so that's subsection two, the mayor is not addressing that, because I believe the mayor pro tem language that we already have would address that situation, if something were to happen to all of them, we could add subsection three, which would say, in the event the mayor pro tem, deputy treasurer or deputy city clerk cannot serve to fill the respective vacancy on an interim basis, then the city council shall vote on an interim mayor, interim treasurer, or interim city clerk, now, to address, so that would be, that was the second language, with the point that Alderwoman Nutriano just brought up, there, we could add a final sentence to that that says, the interim, an interim mayor, interim treasurer, or interim city clerk appointed under this subsection A3 shall not be eligible to be appointed to mayor, treasurer, or city clerk.
I agree with that.
Alderwoman Purchase, this is your amendment, so I'm going to let you have the say so on this.
Well, Jan, I'm just thinking like, what if I stepped in and wanted to take, take the position, so, like any of us up here, because we have the knowledge behind it, I understand where you're coming from, but say for instance, something happened to Chuck and Joanne, and I said, well, you know what, Jan, I, I want to step in too, and this is realistic too, this is being in real time, I wanted to step in, so, we're saying, Corporation Council on this, if I wanted to put in for this position, you're saying on that third section, that I would not be, I, I would be able to step into it, but I wouldn't be able to continue, is that what you're saying?
That was language that's optional right now, that I added based on Alderwoman Nutriano's concern, if that's approved, then yes, you wouldn't be able to step in, the way you would approach it on that is, I do not want to serve on an interim basis at this time, because I will be submitting my application to the, for the final, or, or I'll be submitting my application under the, under subsection A1.
Well, that keeps it transparent too, so if I did want to, I have to prove myself and say that this is the reason why I'm stepping in and put my resume forward, listen, I said I was supporting you, I'm trying to work it out where we get six votes, because if it don't get six votes, it doesn't
No, we need five votes.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, we missing one seat, so five votes, but I'm trying to work it out where
Yeah, I, I'd like to have nine.
Yeah, I'm trying to work it out where it's sufficient for everybody, but I think, I think we're moving in the right direction, I'm not for sure that we have the consensus of the whole body, but if you want to move forward with it, I'm, I, and I see our clerk, I mean, our treasurer, she has her hand up too, but
So first of all, your amendment at this time only has the first subsection, do you want it to end with that, or what is your?
To end with the last thing he said.
What is your choice? We need to know the amendment itself, what you want.
Yeah, so right now, I only have the subsection two, which addresses the, the deputy treasurer and deputy city clerk, it sounds like you also want subsection three as a part of your amendment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with
Do you want me to include?
Yes.
Or language?
Are y'all fine?
So Alderman Gregory, you were the second on the amendments, are you okay with that?
Boy.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, we're still in discussion on the amendment, just making sure that, okay, so Treasurer Redpath Fager?
Thank you, I just needed clarification, so would the deputy treasurer need to resign from their position at the time of no treasurer for them to be eligible to be the treasurer?
No, not under this, because under subsection, because the deputy treasurer would become interim treasurer under subsection two, the way the language I have crafted here works is only somebody appointed on an interim basis under subsection A3 would be ineligible to be appointed under subsection A1.
Okay.
And that brings up another point too, which is, that deals with appointment under subsection A1, if there's an election, an appointment on an interim basis, the way this is written, would not disqualify you from putting in your name to run in a special election, if one were to occur.
So mayor
There's a public vote, so
The treasure is not done yet.
Yep, so, so
Clarification, my deputy treasurer is, I'm, I'm no longer the treasurer, my deputy treasurer is available to be the interim while the process that is picked by the council tonight, and my deputy treasurer is eligible to be the next treasurer, correct?
That, that's correct.
With the language of this ordinance.
With the language of how the ordinance is drafted now.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on record, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment, we're just on the amendment still, okay, seeing none, Clerk Redpath, will you do a roll call vote on the amendment, please? This is only on the amendment.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Neutral, or whatever.
No, you need to be aye, bro.
You want to vote present on the amendment?
Yeah, present.
Is that, can you do that?
Alderman Rockford?
No.
Alderman Purchase?
Aye.
Ald, Alderwoman Nutriano?
Aye.
Alderman Carlson?
No.
Alderman Conley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, aye.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Alderman Hanhour?
No.
Four yeses, one present, and four no's. Sorry, I was wrong.
That's okay, so Corporation Council, Mordock, on the amendment?
Give me a minute.
We're pulling Roberts Rules of Orders up.
Didn't get five, so
So
That's a good, that's a good addition.
Let Corporation Council speak first, he voted present.
He voted present.
So your present didn't help us though.
Yeah, it did, because he got with them.
No, he just said it did.
Now it doesn't.
Right, now it doesn't.
Vote the way I want to, look, straight up and down, not Aaron's bullshit. Well, I'm going to go to the restroom.
You need to be here for the next vote.
You want me to vote on it? Then I'm going to vote no.
Mayor votes no?
So, Roy?
So a motion fails, the amendment fails.
It's back and forth.
So now we have Alders signed up to speak on the ordinance itself, so Alderman Donlin, you're the first person signed up to speak on the ordinance itself.
Thank you, Mayor, I got a couple of comments about the, the language itself, and, and first of all, I want to say, like I said last week, I like the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, I want to thank the sponsors for that, I think we do need a process a little more clear in sta, in statute or code, whatever you want to say, and the, the main problem I had with this is, I don't like it when, and we've tried it a couple other times over the years, and I don't like it when we set up a two-thirds majority vote, I think that's, I, I would just ask the sponsors if they would consider, well, let me, let me ask this question, before I ask that question, section two of the proposed ordinance talks about the council at the time of the vacancy setting up criteria, and really, my question's kind of simple, Corporation Council, isn't the criteria really the consent decree in the statute, and what I'm getting at is, what if the, the council, I'm going to use an extreme example, so, what if the council at the time said, well, you know, come up with something off the wall to throw in there, or something that's not consistent, isn't it, shouldn't we just be referencing the consent decree in section two, the criteria's the criteria, I mean, you got to live in the, you got to live in the city, you got to live in the city a year, I think there's, is there anything else that would apply other than having to pay your bill?
No, right, right now, that's, that's the minimum level, and that's what you need to be an elected official.
Right.
This would establish a, it would be the city council deciding what weight they're going to give to different, different qualifications for the applicants.
What I'm getting at is, what if, what if the council at the time thought, well, the person should have a treasurer's designation, because I know there's, I know there's one you get at the municipal league, and that arguably, or not arguably, limited the pool, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's appropriate, I, I, all I would ask is, if we could, I think this would be more palatable to me if it, and I hate legislating on the fly here like this, I like, I like it when things are in writing and so forth, but if we could consider either removing, I think we should change section two, subsection two, to refer to the qualifications that are established in the consent decree, and then we wouldn't even need that two-thirds language, in other words, we're simplifying it, in other words, you qualify if you qualify to be an eligible candidate, I like the idea of having a public process where candidates are, are, you know, like the rest of the ordinance, that there is public involvement, at least, you know, people hear who's, see and hear who's interested, I think that's fair, but, I mean, really, I guess my question's kind of a simple one, is, will the sponsors, or I'd like to even propose an amendment to change section two to what I just described, Corporation Council, and if it is too arduous not to see it, I, I would like to work with the, the sponsors and, and Corporation Council, because it's important that it come from that office, to draft something up to, for consideration at a future meeting, but I, I think we can get there, I really do, I believe that, you asked me last week, Alderwoman, after the meeting, you know, can you be for it, and I said I want to be for it, but we need, I got some changes, and we talked about them briefly, and, I don't think it's, it changes things dramatically, but it, it, I just don't like that section in particular, because it gives too much leeway to the council hand, rather than, you know, any and all should be interested, should be allowed to apply, and obviously, if you don't meet the qualification, you live outside the city of Springfield, you, you can't even serve anyway, and then the rest of the process is followed, but I'm curious to what others think about that, if I can throw that out there.
You asking the sponsors then, right now, Alderman?
Kind of everybody, but the sponsors in particular.
Okay, so Alderman Gregory, Alderwoman Purchase, and Alderman, Alderwoman Nutriano, I'll start with you, Alderman Gregory, since you're a sponsor.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm okay with, with it, because, I'm okay with it, and, and I'll say that because no matter what, somebody, how do I say this, somebody's going to have the advantage, somebody's going to have the advantage, so, I'd like the six votes, I, I, I think, well, if we make it eight votes, you know, it, it can be tough for, for qualified people to get on, for obvious reasons, so
So you're saying you support Alderman Donlin's suggestion?
I do, I do.
Okay, thank you, Alderman, for the clarification, Alderwoman Purchase?
I'm okay with it, I just didn't like how just this last amendment just went in, so you get your amendment, and it gets the yes vote, so it is what it is, but I think it could have been brought in with what we just did on this last amendment too, and been included, so it looked like a collective unit, unit on voting for this, so that's, that's the only
Yeah.
I think the only thing that just hit me that didn't feel right or sound right, but I'm with Sean, it's going to happen.
Yes, Alderman Donlin, go ahead.
If I can, and I think that's a fair point, and if we need to work at drafting something up, that, I mean, the spirit of that prior amendment, I think you're almost there, I think we could put up something together that hopefully we can all agree to, I, I just, I don't know if we can do it on the fly like this, but I would be open to that and, and, and working hard to get something.
Then I want to, since Alderman Donlin is saying he definitely wants to work on this, I would ask Alderone, Alderwoman Nutriano, if you okay with it, if we can hold it to bring back the previous amendment that I just had, that just got voted down, to add my stuff and his stuff in it, so it's a collective unit, then we all on the same page.
Right, right now, and let's pass, I'm so tired of dealing with this.
So Alderwoman Nutriano, we're going to the discussion of Alderman Donlin's suggestion, so, you're a sponsor?
Yeah, Alderman Donlin, would you add the
I, I think it would be, I'm going to let you finish, I'm sorry.
The, the language that Corporation Council worked out for us, would, would you be willing to add that to your amendment?
What I'd like to do is have Corp, you and I, or whoever, as long as there's only three of us, that work with Corporation Council on getting something drafted, so we can have it, and all look at it, and then if people have issues with it, they can get in touch with Corporation Council and/or the sponsors ahead of time, and then we can, once we have the meeting and we debate it publicly, we're in a better position to see exactly what we're talking about, and, I mean, I think, again, I think we're making progress. And, I mean, I think, again, I think we're making progress, I think this discussion was very healthy. But, and I think we're almost there, but, and it'd be better, and I, again, appreciate you bringing it up in the first place, because if you didn't, we wouldn't have, we'd be back to where we were before. So if you, if you agree to work with me, I think that'd probably be the cleanest thing. And we have technically a couple weeks, because the next council meeting isn't for a couple weeks.
Thank you, Alderman Donlin, there's several others signed up to speak, any other points, Alderman Donlin?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Carlson?
So with that, so, I just want confirmation, so we are gonna hold this for two weeks?
There's been no motion yet, we're on discussion still.
Excuse me?
We're on discussion, there's been no motion for that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be my choice, I mean, you know, we've been debating this for probably forty-five minutes tonight, seemed to be a lot of moving parts. You know, I think, I think we can, yeah, all get together in a very short time, or the next week or two. I have a couple ideas myself, as far as the merits of the ordinance as well. And at the same time, I'll reiterate, this is an important ordinance. It's important for the future of how we fill vacancies in the city. And that being said, it'd be nice to have ten alderpeople here, so we can hear from that, from that person as well, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Nutriano?
Oh, that, I, I think I clicked that a long time ago. My comments regarding, I, I will, I will let, I, I say we vote on Alderman Donlin's amendment, and then just play it out, yeah.
Any other discussion, Alderwoman?
I don't think so.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Alderman Donlin, thank you for pointing that out, because I think, I think one, one thing that you highlighted in that setting criteria that is different or other than what is required in an election, I think what you pointed out is a way that some other council could establish an additional barrier to someone having access to this position, any, any of these, these three positions, and, and that concerns me. That said, I'm not comfortable voting for this without the interim language in there, too. And if, if what we need to, if, I can't support it without that interim language. I do like Alderman Donlin's language, so I guess my ask would be, do we need to do this tonight? If, I mean, if that's, if that's what the sponsors want to do, we, we can vote. I do think, though, I think we don't have a deadline over us, we don't have anything waiting, and to do it better, as opposed to just, let's get this done, might be a better route. Because I'm, I'm just hearing really good ideas from everybody, and, and Alderwoman Purchase, I mean, I agree with you, I, I think there needs to be some sort of clarity around that, that interim concept, too, because, you know, it is, it is a longer timeline than what we've, we've had with the past, so, yeah. I, I, I would ask that the sponsors maybe hold this, so that we could, and I don't, I don't want to be in that conversation, I know I'm gonna be busy the next two weeks, but I, I think there are good minds around this table, and we could, we could get something that I think we're all comfortable with.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Hanauer?
Well, there's been a lot of things, you know, thrown out there, and, and that's why I, I would feel much more comfortable to see the language before we vote on it, any amendments. I, I, I agree, I think that we can get there, but, you know, just, it, it just seems like whenever we do things on the fly up here, when, with these, we, we usually get ourselves in trouble. And we have to come back and clean things up anyway. I'd, I'd much rather see it, see it held, and let's do it the right way, and, and do it. We didn't have this situation for, from 2010 to 2025, well, twenty-four, I guess. So, you know, I don't understand what the, what the rush is, you know, to, to try to slam this through. I don't think that, I, I just don't think that's necessary. And so, I mean, if, I would like, I'd like to make the motion we hold, hold it till the next meeting.
I'll let the discussion continue, and then I'll come back to your motion, if you don't mind, please. Alderman Gregory, you signed up to speak, and I want to let you speak first.
No, I, I was just gonna say that I, I don't think we should hold it. I think last week I made it clear, if we got ideas, that we like to send them. So we did not send them, we had a week to send all of these ideas, and some of them is good ideas. I think we've heard a, a, a good amount of things, put it in there, put, put Alderman Donlin's in there, and what Murdock has had written for you, it's a small little change in that last section, let's vote on this thing, and be done with it. If it fa- if it fails, we can't bring it back for eighteen months, we're done, if we're passed, that's the, that's the new, new process. If we want to come back and change it, that's what we do. I mean, honestly, we've been changing laws as, as politicians for a very long time to get things right, and we may have to come back and adjust it, we may, that's, that's just what we do, and we should be okay with doing that, without a problem, or, or feeling like we failed anywhere. So I, I, I think we, we, I won't be voting to hold it, I think that's not the right thing to do. I, I want to get past the situation, and, and, and set something in place, never know what happens. Yeah, it was fifteen years, it could be fifteen minutes. But we, we need to get something in place, and we need to move on. I'm tired of this, this, this holding over our heads, this, this cloud over our heads, like we got a bad process. So that's my take on it, thank you.
Alderman Rockford?
Yeah, I, I would like to talk about, first, you know, we, we talked about, this hasn't happened since 2010. We haven't had anybody want to run for another office. You sign up to run for that, that office, you win, you know, we got to have a timeline when these people have to step down. This guy went on for how many months, since November? This is our problem, that we need to start there first. This is confusing what we're doing right now, going back and forth and adding amendments and, and this kind of stuff. I just wish, in the future, that Aldermen would call one another and say, hey, this is what we're putting forward. Maybe we have suggestions, maybe we can, instead of coming down here for forty-five minutes, an hour, hour and a half, we can talk about it, and, and put our suggestions in over the phone, you know, and then present it. But, you know, this all started with our city clerk that ran for the county. He won, he should have been gone, and it would have went a lot quicker. You know, that's what we need to start at, put a timeline on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Purchase?
So I would say to Alderman Rockford, I understand what you're saying, but we go through a three-week cycle. So you have first reading, then you have our city council, where you do motion for a debate or motion for consent. And as Alderman Gregory said, there was time last week, but where was any of those amendments at? There was no amendments that came in, so now we're here at the vote. So even if Alderwoman Nutriano didn't call every single person, we still had time for something to come in, and for something to come out through Tim Griffin for us to read.
Now... Then we should just take a vote, take a vote on her amendment, on your, on you guys', or, or your ordinance, take a vote on that.
On Donlin's.
Well, I think that's the point that we're at.
Without the amendments.
But I just want to be clear for the record, that there is time for amendments, there's time for ideals to be coming across our desks within a, a three-week timeframe. It's not like it just goes one week, and then it comes the next week and we're voting. So we've had two weeks to talk about this, we've had two weeks for an email to come out with ideals that other colleagues may have had.
We have no positions we have to fill. We have no positions, nobody's, nothing's vacant right now. So we're, we're setting this up for the future if something happens. So there's, there's nothing, we should have done this back when Frank Lesko ran for recorder. And, and in, in Corporation Council, we talked, and I brought it, brought it up then, that we need to make something, put something in writing, to give him two-week notice, and he's gone. When you sign up to, to, to run for an office, you win or lose. He won, whether there's a, a recount or whatever, he won, he should have stepped out. That's, that's the way the cookie crumbles, okay, he wins or loses. But now, now here we are, we're, we're gonna pass an ordinance, we're fighting over an ordinance, we have no vacancies. The, the clerk's position is filled, so this is for the future. Give it time, and let's talk about it a little bit. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderwoman Purchase, any other comments from you?
No, Mayor, I've said what I said. I didn't agree with how my amendment just failed, and it had some validity to it, and now we're bringing up another amendment that is supposed to pass. So if we're all on the same page, and we're being transparent and wanting to work, I'm voting present on this amendment that's coming forward. If Alderwoman Nutriano would like to hold it, so that the language that was just failed, and the amendment comes forward with Alderman Donlin's amendment, too, and it's all together, I'm for voting for that. But if not, and we're getting ready to vote on this amendment, I'm voting present on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Nutriano?
Um, I would just like to say that, yeah, we should have had this discussion months ago, whenever, the first time I asked how we're going to select a new clerk, and no one had anything to say. And then maybe the second time I asked how we were gonna select a new clerk, and nobody had anything to say. I put this forward as a first draft for you all to comment on. I am sorry, Alderman Rockford, I didn't reach out to anyone except for the sponsors. I will say, in, in my discussions about this process and, and trying to remedy what happened, I, I spoke to Corporation Council, and he let me know that a, a future council could disregard this whole thing, what together, what all, like, all together. They, they don't even have to follow this. What we're doing is trying to make amends, trying to, like, get the public's input if this were to happen again. Another council could decide to not take public input, you know?
And I, I respect that, and I, I understand that. But we, you brought up an ordinance, you and the cosponsors, and now we've got five different amendments we want to add to it, you know, vote, vote on the, the, the ordinance. But again, I brought it up, uh, uh, three weeks after the election, in, in November, about a timeline to get this guy out of office, and this is where we're at.
Any other comments, Alderwoman?
I think that's it right now.
Alderman Gregory?
But just, just to be clear, Rock, you're alderman, too. If you felt three weeks that there was a process, you could have asked Murdock to submit a new ordinance, and say, hey, I want an ordinance for this, that, and the other. And then if it was something that you needed some other ones in, so, so we let that process go, it wasn't a process that everyone was happy, so now we're trying to change it for the future, and future councils can do it. But I, I want, I, I just want you to know that, though, bro. You're alderman, too, so if you feel strongly about something, you can bring that thing, and, and, and the same thing. I'm not a big, I'm not a big person that, you know, y'all hear it all the time, of calling everybody. I believe on natural, um, um, field of things and understanding of things. I don't like calling to get everything set, I don't think we should do that. I, I think we should call our supporters and people who we know support the things that we do, but calling all ten of us, I'm not a fan of that. I don't like setting the vote and coming out here and have it all, all done, that we should have natural. Somebody from this crowd may come up and have some information, or, or, or turn us, and they should be able to turn us, if it's right. And that's my take, I'm ready to vote and, and, and get past this.
We have one more person signed up to speak, and then we had a motion, so Alderman Williams?
Yes, I, I've been trying to be good, I swear. You know, I find it interesting that the four, the people over there, who, yeah, here we go, you're right. Because, you know, I'm telling the truth. The, all of a sudden, you guys got issues, and you created it by not dealing with Lesko, when not, I don't know how many of us, was trying to say, he's got to go. Even when Chuck was still in his seat, he's got to go, I said. Mayor knows this, I said it in public, the public can go and look at the old city councils. And it was you four, plus one more, that made it five and five, and our notorious mayor broke the tie, and said, no, we're not holding it. And then, I mean, I can go on and on with these examples. All I'm saying to you, Aaron, is, it's interesting now, that it's probably a turnout of five to four vote with this ordinance passing, that all of a sudden, we got all these issues, and Carlson sits there, and, you know, you, everything you said tonight, you said last week. We already know how you guys feel. We already know. The war won, well, that's why you're being updated this week, to know that number one is not here, and that's the concern, you want a five to five, so that the notorious mayor can do what she does. I'm gonna vote with you guys. We can't keep doing that. Sometimes you got to learn to take the loss, it's for the future. Like you said, somebody could change it if they want to, that's your corporate council telling you. If they want to ignore it when they're here, they can ignore it. So it ain't the end of the world if it passed tonight. You're so stubborn, and so set in your ways, that you make all these catastrophes happen. We got people getting hit by the bus, we got people, you know, leaving with their, with their director, so, I mean, just all this craziness over something that started over an hour ago, when all we had to do is pass the vote. And, and like I said, whether you had amendments or not, you missed that time, it didn't come. So, Aaron, guess what, we would have ignored you and just voted. But some of my colleagues, being nice, like they do, got theirself in trouble. Because I don't know where this is going now. I have no idea how this is gonna come out, but I know how it could have. We stick to your guns, what you believe last week, you believe this week, Aaron's back, we still vote, it's five to four, notorious mayor can't break a tie, and it's five to four like it was when they put the clerk in. And that's what Carlson was getting at last week, he knows it. So all I'm saying to you guys, sometimes y'all need to just quit it. And sometimes my colleagues need to be a little stronger, instead of doing all this time period, because you came in here saying, we're gonna pass this thing. And somehow, we let Ward Eight Alderman, Aaron Conley say, well, I'm a little com- Donlin's been saying what he's been saying, but he won't say, if you pass mine, like you asked him, I'll pass yours whole, and then we're done with this. He is saying, you pass mine, and we still need to hold. What, how's, thank you, Mayor.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Williams, I would caution you on assuming that you know how I'm gonna vote for something. No, no, I have the floor. Don't assume, we know what that makes of everybody, right? What I'm talking about was, I had questions, and yeah, I was sick last week, and I've been sick, so I did not reach out to the sponsors, and I apologize for that, it wasn't a great week for me. I don't think it's a, I, I thought that Alderwoman Purchase had a, took a concept and, and put forward a great amendment. I supported that. I vote, I either vote yes or I vote no, I don't vote present on things, I support them or not. I think Alderman Donlin has raised some significant issues, too. I think including the language that's in there right now creates a barrier. There's no reason, we're not in a rush here, I, I, I guess my concern with this is, you're assuming that no one wants this. I'm, I'm willing to vote for it if it's amended, and I don't see why, well, let me finish. I don't see why, holding it for another meeting to make sure that the language is what we can all agree on, so we don't have to come back, I mean, I, I don't see why that's something that gets me called out, okay? I'm, I think this is a good idea, and I appreciate that Alderwoman Nutriano took the first steps on this. But we're a body of, of, well, nine right now, but I don't see, how is it offensive that people want to have, have this public conversation and discussion? I mean, the whole, the whole intent of this ordinance, am I right, Alderwoman Nutriano?
No, you're right.
The whole intent of this ordinance is to have this conversation in public, so that's what we're doing. We're raising issues, we're asking questions. I don't think this needs to be an us versus them kind of situation, Alderman. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Hanauer, you have a motion, and Alderman Carlson seconded it, but do you want to have discussion?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion and call the question, Mayor.
Okay, so Alderman Hanauer is withdrawing his motion to hold, Alderman Carlson, you were the second on that, are you okay with that? Just to make sure we, okay, so that motion has been withdrawn.
So that's a two-thirds, so call the question, we have to vote.
Signed up to speak, so you want to call the question now?
Yes, ma'am.
And Alderman Williams, that's what you wanted to do as well, correct?
On the original order.
Correct, it's not amended, correct.
So are we on a...
Yes, Alderwoman, there is no amendment, just the original order.
Wait, Donlin doesn't have an amendment?
Yes.
No.
So the voting will, do you have a question, Alderwoman?
Well...
Let's vote.
Is there an amendment?
Call the question, is the...
There's call the question, there's no amendment.
She's asked for a point of order for clarification on whether or not Alderman Donlin's amendment was seconded, correct?
No, I, I really never proposed, I never made a motion, I just threw the idea out there, so I don't have an amendment. I'd love to work on an amendment, but...
So the voting will now be open?
Do we, what are we, are we voting on call the question?
The original ordinance as presented.
You should vote on calling the question, that's Roberts' Rules.
We're voting on the amendment, right?
No, there is no amendment.
No, there's no amendment. I mean, on the, on the ordinance.
Okay.
Alder, Alder, or I'm sorry, Corporation Council, Mordock?
Checking to the call to question.
I, I object that we call the question without doing the proper...
Okay, so it's, it's not a unanimous agreement to the call to question, so... Okay, so it's not a unanimous agreement to the call to question, so there needs to be a roll call, call to question, two-thirds vote. If the call to question fails, then discussion can continue if there's any more discussion. If there's no more discussion, then we can open it for a final vote.
So I'll let you do a roll call vote on call the question, if you would please, clerk.
Yes is to stop.
So a yes would be to stop debate, call the question.
I withdraw my motion to call the question.
Alderman Hanauer had one as well, sir, so I apologize. So a yes would be to call the question, stop discussion, and no would be to continue discussion, just to be clear on what you're voting on.
Ready, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Gregory?
Is this on the call to question? No.
Alderman Williams?
No.
Alderman Rockford?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase?
No.
Alderwoman Nottriano?
No.
Alderman Carlson?
Yes.
Alderman Connolly?
No.
Alderman Donilon?
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer?
So five to four, five no's, four yeses, so we can continue discussion.
Okay. Would it be in order for me to propose an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. I would, and it's okay if I propose an amendment that has already been considered, just with some tweaks.
Yeah, that would be a new amendment.
Okay. So I would like to take the language that you so diligently wrote for us in its entirety, and put that in an amendment, and then also, um, take the question, let me pull up the thing. Is there a way for us to, in section two on the evaluation criteria, make it known that we can't, um, I don't know.
I don't either.
So...
Believe it as it is.
What was your idea? What, so you want to strike section two for criteria? Is that what you're saying, Donilon?
Okay, may I respond?
Yes, Alderman.
Yeah, what the concept that I talked about, Alderwoman, was us getting some language drafted, that where we could be specific in section two, that the criteria is the consent decree slash statute or code, whatever's applicable, and we should follow. In other words, what the qualifications are for the office, and really, that's simple. That also would impact section three, because section three references section two. So, again, on the fly, I'm not sure how we get that accomplished, and make sure it's agreeable to everybody, but, again, I'd be willing to work on that language, and I don't think it'd take very long, but I don't know if we'll be able to do it without being in front of a computer.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, I think so. So instead of establish the criteria, can we change section two to say, make public the evaluation criteria? And then clarify that that is the criteria for holding office?
Instead of criteria, can we use publication of eligibility for office?
Sure, absolutely.
So Alderwoman, I'm gonna revisit, because I'm gonna call this amendment number two, because amendment number one failed, so we just, for clerk's purposes. So amendment number two, you want to go ahead and adopt both sections of the previous amendment?
All, all... I believe there were threes, how many?
Uh, two, subsection A.2 and subsection A.3.
Yeah.
So A.2 and A.3, those two sections, and then you're adding a third section, and will you please tell the council again what you're adding, just so they know what they're voting on?
Can you help me, Corporation Counsel?
Yeah, I'm, give me a minute.
Okay.
Maybe if we do this.
I don't know. Alderwoman Purchase?
I didn't get to her. The last one?
Okay, so, the best way to do this, under how this is currently drafted, would be under subsection A.1i, add a following sentence that says, the posting shall also include the requirements for eligibility of office. Then, A.1 subsection two will be reserved, and then A.1 subsection three would be amended to read, the application period shall begin at the time of the job post, at the time the job posting is made public, is set forth in subsection A.1i, and will terminate at 12:00 AM of the next regular city council meeting, after the publication as set forth above, but in no event shall the application period be less than 13 calendar days. So there is a chance, because there's a one-day posting, where we publish, and it's five days until our next city council meeting, but this would require that job posting to be up still for at least 13 days.
Okay, I like that.
Any other additions to your amendment, Alderwoman?
Uh, let's see. I would like to, like, do the whole buffet, but Alderman Rockford, I don't know that what your point is fits in this section. So I think that's gonna be a separate ordinance altogether.
So you have...
So we're talking the two weeks notice for the, when a person runs, if it ever happens again. But we have to have something in there if it happens. You know, there's nothing in there.
Alderwoman, are you asking Corporation Counsel to answer that?
Yes, I understand that, I understand that. Tomorrow, I'll call you, and we'll sit down, and we'll put something together, how's that?
Okay, perfect. Love it. All right. Now, now...
Any other additions to your amendment?
I think that's it, I hope.
Second on her amendment.
So we have a motion and a second, but I'm gonna have, I'm gonna let Corporation Counsel finish writing, and then read the full amendment, before we have discussion, just so when you have discussion, you know what you're discussing.
Okay. So amendment number one amends subsection A.1i as followed, or amendment, amendment number two, the amendment on the floor, amend section A.1i of this ordinance as follows, it would read, job posting within one business day of the vacancy, the city shall post a notice of vacancy for the position. The posting shall state the job duties of the position is set forth in city code in the manner in which to apply. The posting shall also include the requirements for eligibility of the vacant office. Subsection A.12, all the language will be stricken, and instead, it will simply read reserved. Section A.1, uh, three will read, the application period shall begin at the time of the job posting is set forth above, and will terminate at 12:00 AM of the next regular or special city council meeting after the posting, but in no event shall the application period be less than 13 calendar days. The amendment will then add subsection A.2 and subsection A.3 as read into the record in amendment number one.
So we have a motion and a second, so the discussion is just on this amendment at this time. Alderman Carlson, do you have discussion on this amendment?
Uh, no.
General, no, okay. And Treasurer Redpath Fager, you have discussion on the amendment?
Yep, just clarification, as we did on amendment one, is it the same, the deputy treasurer or the deputy clerk that's currently in those positions will fill in as interim, and then they are still eligible to be the treasurer or the clerk? Okay, thank you.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, and Alderman Carlson, I'll get to after we vote on the amendment. Clerk, would you please do a roll call on amendment number two?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Rockford?
No.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Aye.
Alderwoman Nottriano?
Yes.
Alderman Carlson?
No.
Alderman, Alderwoman Connolly?
Yes.
Alderman Donilon?
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer?
No.
Mayor, I have six yes, and three no's.
So the amendment passes. We're gonna go to discussion now on the general ordinance with the, as the amended version. Alderman Carlson?
You know, we've been debating this for two hours. I think we're doing a disservice, really, to the citizens of Springfield. I mean, I am not sure right now, really, what we're voting on. We have had so many amendments discussed, so many moving parts, and again, I just don't know what the rush is. I have a sneaky suspicion I know what the rush is, but that's just disingenuous to the citizens of Springfield. I wouldn't make a motion that we hold this.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to hold this in committee, and we were in discussion on the amendment, so first, we need to vote on, or we just voted on, sorry, we were in discussion on the whole ordinance as amended. So we have a motion to hold it in committee, second from Alderman Hanauer, would that be correct, Alderman? Okay. So, any discussion on holding it? I need to ask for discussion before we have a vote. Seeing none? Before we have a vote on holding it, there is one citizen who signed up to speak, but Mr. Pasha, do you want to spend your time on this ordinance, or at the end of the meeting? When do you want to spend your five minutes, sir?
At this point, I don't know there's much I could add that you guys have, so...
End of a meeting? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, sir, because you put this in there. Okay. So with that being said, clerk, would you please roll call vote for the ordinance as amended?
I did hear you, Mayor.
We're doing a, well, I guess we can just, voting will now be open, I guess.
A motion to hold?
Motion to hold, you're right, sorry. So a roll call vote, motion to hold. Thank you, Alderman Hanauer, sorry.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Gregory?
No.
Alderman Williams?
No.
Alderman Rockford?
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase?
No.
Alderwoman Nottriano?
No.
Alderman Carlson?
Aye.
Alderwoman Connolly?
No.
Alderman Donilon?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
So five no's, so we're not holding...
Five to four, Mayor, no's.
Yeah, we're not holding it in committee. So, back to the ordinance as amended, I just want to make sure if there's any other discussion. I, okay, and Alderman Carlson, do you have discussion?
That's old.
That's old, okay. So now, the voting will, are we okay? Are you ready for that?
I am.
I know you're writing still, so... Okay, so as the ordinance as amended with amendment number two, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. All those opposed, will vote no.
That's from your old vote.
I think everyone has voted. So the motion passes with five voting yes and four voting no. Next item on the agenda, you okay with that?
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is 2025-036, sorry.
I just want to note that it said five-four, it said failed, because there were five votes, but there are, there are nine Aldermen, we have an odd number of Aldermen, so five is a pass.
The next item on the agenda is item number 2025-036, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Lexa Incorporated for financial assistance for the property located at 322 East Adam Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds in the amount of $1,455,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The chair will now entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2025-036 on final passage. Can I get a motion? We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to go to final passage, any discussion? Anyone need to sign up to speak? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Alderman Hanauer, how do you vote?
Hit the button.
There we go, and the motion passes with eight voting yes, none voting no, and one abstaining. Thank you for your patience tonight, too, by the way.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That is it for all of our ordinances to be considered. Is there any unfinished business by the council members to bring forward to the city council? Alderman Gregory?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be quick. I just want to say, you know, it is Black History Month, and to my, to my council members, I didn't tell them I was gonna say this, but, you know, we stand in history as the first time that three African-American or black people have sat on this council, and, you know, we've grown a lot. We ain't always got along, but it is, it is my honor to really serve with y'all, even Grumpy Smurf here. But we go, we, you know, and we enjoy, you know, even though we have some hard conversations, being on this council. I know I do, and I know I speak for them, for us younger ones. We work very, very hard to catch on, learn a lot, and, you know, I can say that this ride has been interesting. It's tough, and sometimes we go through some things, through some things that people probably don't understand, and probably don't know, because if we speak on it, then we're whining, and, so I compliment y'all for walking in this, and trying to do what we need to do, and we know that's right. So that's all I wanted to say, and I just appreciate everybody for hearing us.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory. We're still on unfinished business. Alderwoman Purchase, you have unfinished business?
Thank you. I echo what Alderman Gregory said. You know, this is a unique time for us, and it has been some trying times, and I don't even want to get emotional, but working with Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory has been challenging, but I think these challenges have made us stronger together. It has made us face situations that we need to come together and conquer, because when we come together, nobody can defeat us. And I just want to thank you all for having the patience, and Roy, yeah, you could be stubborn, even tonight, but we still appreciate you, and I just want to say, happy Black History Month to everyone in the entire city of Springfield.
Any other old, old business? So now we're on new business, and for new business, I know Scott Doll has, with SCV B., some things that he has put out about Black History Month, so I want to commend you for that. The library director, Director Harrison, is putting some events together, and so is our communications director, Director Wilson. So just to let you all know that as well.
Congrats to her too, Mayor, she was a...
Yes, well, we have the most black directors than we've ever had as well, so that is a huge plus, too. Before I call on the Alders, I'm gonna go out of line here and ask Director Fuchs to come to the podium. He doesn't know I'm doing this.
Ooh.
Hi, Storm.
Pardon me, yes. Director, you do so well at this, I'd like you to touch on the weather for tonight and tomorrow, if you do not mind, so everyone listening can hear.
He touches, get erased.
Please indulge us.
The city of Springfield is going to be involved in a precipitation incident this evening. The difficulty is that the temperatures are going to be very, very close to freezing. The forecast that I have seen said that anytime between 4:00 AM and 11:00 AM tomorrow, the rain will start. It'll start as rain, but the temperatures will drop. Again, they'll be hovering right around freezing, so that means we could have some freezing rain a couple of hours before the sun comes up tomorrow. Once the sun comes up, it's gonna continue to rain all the way into the afternoon. There again, when does the temperature go above freezing? So, we will have a zone manager in the field starting at 2:00 AM, so we'll be getting regular reports. We've got the troubleshooters ready to go, the trucks are loaded with salt in case it does turn to ice, and we will deploy them at the appropriate time. But I caution everybody, if we do get the ice, and I hope that we don't, please be very, very careful driving... please be very, very careful driving on your way to school and on the way to work in the morning.
Thank you, Director. I thought everyone should hear that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Rockford?
Dave, don't go anywhere. Got a couple calls here the last couple days of letters that were sent out in Corporation Council, you might want to chime in, of people being threatened with a fine for not shoveling their sidewalks.
Yes.
And, well, I drove around town a lot during the snow, and it was more than just a couple sidewalks. So, my question is, is how do we pick and choose who's getting the letters?
We actually don't pick and choose, Alderman. As you know, there is an ordinance, and I'm sorry I don't have the citation, that requires property owners who, whose property is adjacent to a sidewalk, the public way, are required to clear that sidewalk by 10:00 o'clock in the morning the day following the precipitation event. The individuals who receive these letters, we, in the Housing Division, received a specific complaint. That means someone picked up the phone or got on their email and sent a complaint directly to the city and said at such and such an address, the sidewalk has not been cleared. What we do then is we send an inspector out to take some images to capture it. We usually try and knock on the door of the property owner and inform them we've got a specific complaint that the sidewalk has not been cleared, and that's what generates those letters.
Yes, so, so maybe in the future, our communications director or somebody can put out some kind of informational, on the website, informational letter or notice to, to the citizens, you know, be aware that you're, you're responsible for your sidewalks and, you know, instead of somebody calling and saying, hey, they're threatening me with 150 bucks, you know.
I can appreciate that, and a warning would be appropriate, but once again, those are the result of a specific complaint that we have received.
Thank you, guys.
As the complaints were coming in, she did put a public notice out to the media and on the social media as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else, Alderman Rockford?
No.
I guess you're off the hook for a minute. Alderman Williams?
Yes, Mayor. I got a couple of things. The first thing is the tree commission. Now, you know, when a whole commission resigns, I have to ask the question of what happened? Can you answer that?
That would be...
Or who, who would the tree commission fall under?
That would be Chief of Staff Disco, and then they actually meet in the Public Works Department.
The urban forestry commission, sir?
Yes, yes. We refer to it on neighborhoods as tree commission.
I was unaware that they had, they had all resigned.
You was unaware?
I, yes, sir.
Well, I think most of us got letters from each member and from the Chair that they have resigned from doing business or from serving, and I see them as educated, well, dedicated, you know, volunteers to be on that commission, and some have done it for years, and it concerns me. It concerns me because they wrote a million-dollar grant, and that grant was very, or supposed to be meant to help a lot of things happen with trees in wards two and three.
Yes, sir.
The way that grant was raised, so I'm kind of concerned if, are we in jeopardy of losing the grant?
We are on hold right now. We have been informed by the Grant Monitor that due to a communication from, from the White House through the OMB, Office of Management and Budget, that all grants are frozen, I believe is the term.
Okay, okay, so...
We have been, we have been informed to proceed with great caution because it is not clear that those funds will be available.
Okay, so, I mean, nothing you could do about it, nothing I could do about it, but it leads me to still, a whole commission, not one person, a whole commission resigned. You know, I know some of their issues, I've gotten some of their calls, but I would like the city to address this on what really is going on, because when a whole tree commission like that resigns, some of those are some very reputable people that serve on that commission, and I don't know what happened from the city side. You know, so if you would, Mayor, or Director, if someone can find out, please, I don't know if you'll do it through email or phone call or what, maybe Mike can give me a call or something, but I would like to understand this, because that's very concern, concerning to me and high on my list. You know, wanting to find out what happened. The second thing is, reading the papers and listening to the news, we had hired a guy, I guess, that now is in jail. He was demoing our houses. This gentleman, I guess, got the majority done, except for maybe one house, the way it looked like it read, but I'm trying to figure out, he was from Platoon, Illinois, so I'm always worried about city, city preference, city people. So I'm trying to ask you about our city local preference. Is that still in existence?
It is, but that was the lowest bid for the latest demolition contract. Mr. Schaefer, I believe is the name.
So did he beat a local person by 10%? I think it reads.
There were no immediate local companies that applied for that.
Only local companies, okay. And then, on those houses, so the asbestos testing and, you know, things of that nature, did he...
Yes, he performed the work.
We did that, so...
Abated the asbestos, yes, sir.
He did, get it abated, okay. That's all I have for right now, thank you.
Alderman, we will have Chief of Staff Disco follow up with you on your question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Alderwoman Nitrano?
Yes, this is actually another Public Works. So, there is a house that I know you're well aware of, located at 206 West Allen, in Alderwoman Purchase's ward, but it's a, it's a, it's a boundary place for us. And, I know, I know this place has to be ticking the boxes of our nuisance property ordinance, and so I would just like an update. Whenever...
Get you an update on that?
Yeah, whenever we can, because I want to make sure that we're following that ordinance and to the fullest extent. And, we've spent thousands of dollars hauling these people's garbage away. Like, it's, it's time for this city to be able to, you know, restore some order on that block, essentially. But, yeah, so, please, let me and Alderwoman Purchase know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Alderwoman?
No, I think that's, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Director, I received some calls about the, sometimes when we, when we plow the snow, that they kind of got up on people's yards.
Yes, sir.
We should just send those to Public Works, right? Or should, is there a number of people can call? And if we can get Haley to, to put it out, to call?
First, let me say that that is a, not a common occurrence, but every snow season, it happens on occasion, and the turf is torn up. Sometimes there's damage to mailboxes and whatnot. We repair, the city repairs the damage of the turf. We have a crew that does that. We usually wait until the spring thaw. But if anybody has had damage to their property as a result of something like that with a snowplow, please reach out to Public Works, 789-2255, and we will direct them on how to, how we'll deal with that.
All right, and then, for the future, it might be wise, you know, when we get ready for snow, maybe recommend to people, especially, they seem to happen more when people are on the corner, when they go around the corner, you know, they cut it. Maybe recommend that people get the poles that you, that identify where the curve is, so that they can...
Yeah, I see those quite often, those are helpful.
That would help our drivers, I know, and, and, and so. I just wanted to bring it up, and I did send a few to you this week, and I'm sure I'll, I'll be hearing some more, so thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Real quick question, Corporation Council, what's the status of the appellate court case regarding Old Town Demos?
So, we received the decision last week. The Circuit Court affirmed in part, or the appellate court affirmed the Circuit Court in part and reversed in part. They found that the building was dangerous and unsafe, but there was, they found that there was a material fact under dispute as to the value of the property and whether or not it was reasonable to repair, so they remanded it back to the Circuit Court to have a hearing on that issue.
And if it goes back, as you're describing, to the Circuit Court, can they then appeal it again? Or would you rather not answer that question?
Well, yeah, yes, they can appeal it. So the, the portion that was affirmed, that, that decision is now final, so it will be a limited trial on the value of the property and whether or not repairs are feasible, given the, given the value of the property.
So do we have the authority to demo anything right now?
Well, under the, under the Circuit Court's order, we were authorized to demo the property, but the city would be liable for the damages if we did, if we lost the trial, so.
Thank you. I would just implore, and I know the departments have been very good at this, but I'm constantly getting calls from the neighbors, and rightfully so, and I've driven through there myself many times, and, and people are in there, Public Works and Police Department, please make it a part of regular patrol. Someone's going to get hurt. I don't want there to be a fire, I don't want anybody to get hurt. Plus, the neighbors shouldn't have to put up with it. So anything we can do, and I know we have been, but let's step it up and keep it going.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any other new business from the council? Okay, seeing none, we will go to citizens who have signed up to speak and address the council. The first person signed up to speak is Aaron Cahill.
Mayor.
Is there an Aaron Cahill here? Next person signed up to speak is Ken Pasha.
Kudos to everybody for passing that resolution, I appreciate it. It's very nice. We even found some agreement from folks who typically don't. It's nice to see that happen on the council. A lot of times we'll see things die with, as Roy noted, the mayor making that decision, which shouldn't be the case. I think that's frustrating for a lot of people when we watch the council not be able to come to a middle ground. I will say it frustrates me to hear that you guys don't talk about this stuff outside of sitting here. Now, while I do appreciate Gregory's point, I think you should have natural debates where people hear things and come up with it, and you shouldn't just be walking in here as a lockstep group. But it is a little frustrating to hear that maybe you guys aren't politic and outside of here. I mean, you guys should be working together to figure out what's best for your wards and finding things that are going to work for you in the long run to get to those general agreements. And that's not an attack on anyone here, it's just the general idea that there should be more calls between you guys about this stuff. You shouldn't be finding out some of this stuff or voicing those things for the very first time. I mean, you guys can give us bad acting, or you act like you're bringing it up now just for the debate, but, I mean, it would probably behoove a lot of you to get some of this stuff done before you reach here. Because, I mean, some of that debate could be avoided. I think Larry's absolutely right. I mean, the problem with the Clerk's position is, though, and I'm not going to rehash all that, but quite frankly, what led to all that could have been avoided. I think it's really weird to listen to people on the council talk about not wanting to take so long, but how long has Ward One been unrepresented? Right? I mean, at this point, we're going well past the three-week guideline that was outlined in what just passed, so that concern seems almost feigned when we consider why that vacancy exists, right? Again, I'm not going to go back through all that, but it was a little bit suspect of a process, which is why we're doing this right now, right? To avoid that sort of outside look that goes, wow, that smells, looks, and appears crooked, right? So, I mean, I think it's frustrating that, again, just like I said last week, rules for thee but not for me starts to seem, appear weird when we have things like this. No one was concerned about Ward One or the constituents when we willfully allowed the Alderman for it to resign less than a year after the election. So, I mean, that just seems odd to worry about stuff like that. Again, I think Roy did a great job noting that, where there is a lot of that, where we tend to let things slide, or things aren't that important to note, until it's stuff that we oppose, and suddenly the rules matter. Suddenly, process matters. Suddenly, the whole thing matters. But it didn't when we let an Alderman resign. It didn't when we let him just backdoor clerk his way in, did it? I mean, that's the whole idea. It's the idea that the process should always be there. It should always be present. There should never be this like, well, maybe next time we'll get it right. Do it right the first time. It shouldn't take an entire council for someone to sit down and reach out to every person on it and go, this is what I want to get done. What would it take to get a yes vote from you? Because quite frankly, sitting here after months, Connolly, it might upset you when people say that, but it does get to that point where we do kind of know how you're going to vote. I already know if anybody on this side adds something, you're saying no to it, Roy. No, Ralph, sorry, no offense. But, I mean, that's just the way that goes, I got you. But, the problem with that is, though, is it goes into the idea that you guys aren't talking about these outside of that. I spent like an hour and a half talking to Brad at my job. He just saw me walk by and spent a lot of time with that. The idea that he has spent more time talking to me, someone who's not on this council, about some of the stuff that was of concern to the council should be frustrating to you guys as well. And that's not to say Brad did anything wrong, but, like I noted, one of the things that been sitting on the agenda for a long time, the next week I came in, it was gone, because I brought up that concern to an Alder person outside of council. This shouldn't be the only place we talk about that stuff. I'm going to reserve my last minute for what I've been talking about recently. I want to give you guys kudos for shutting down some of those locations and listing them. But I think the thing that frustrates me is where are those women? What has the city done, and what are we going to do to help those women? There are investigations going on right now, but I will tell you right now, if you call the National Human Trafficking Hotline and ask them for resources based out of Springfield for human trafficking victims, they are bereft of those resources, there is zero. The closest ones are Bloomington and Peoria. And as a city, I would hope that you guys would want to work with the SPD, ISP, FBI, whoever all these people are involved in these investigations, so that when they do bust these places, that these women do not end up in cuffs and do not end up in jail, because there is only one place they will go, which is into the immigration system, which if any of you have been watching the news, you wouldn't want anyone to end up in that system, especially a bunch of women who have been sex trafficked and raped on a daily basis for an indeterminate amount of time. So I strongly encourage you guys, while we are patting ourselves on the back for closing these locations, which isn't meant to be a shot, let's concentrate on the idea that if these investigations do come to fruition, where these women and these locations are shut down, where are they going and what are we, as a city, going to do to help them? Because at this point, we as citizens are trying to coordinate that. But it would be nice if our city would do that as well. Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Maribel Cruz-Hine.
Well, I miss you guys. Well, since voting down the proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day, there have been three other proclamations. Now imagine, someone took those proclamations away. Say, you may no longer celebrate. How does that make you feel? I'm sure a lot of you guys know the Defense Department Intelligence Agency has paused observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Day, Pride Month, Holocaust Day of Remembrance, and other cultural, historical, annual events in response to President Donald Trump's ban on diversity, equity, and inclusion programs in a federal workplace. Other 11 annual events include Black History Month, Juneteenth, National History Heritage Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, National American Indian Heritage Month, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, Women Equality Day, and Women History Month. Close Swarbrick said, "When you are accustomed to privilege, equality feels like oppression." Why does it feel that way? Are you fighting for freedom? Or are you fighting for privilege? Who benefits and who pays the price? We need to keep breaking these cycles of systemic racism. Our time here is limited, our love is not. In 200 years from now, what would be your legacy? We don't know everything and are bound to make mistakes, but once we know better, we do better. Just as what we teach our children. I know some time ago, someone said that we need to go back to spanking our kids. Again, I say abuse is not the answer. What are they learning is that someone that loves me will abuse me. Learn to fear me. Emotional, mental, and physical abuse is constantly being used as discipline instead of emotional regulation, emotional intelligence, and healthy coping mechanisms. If you have grown into someone that, who would have protected you as a child, that is powerful. Colonialism didn't just steal land, it rewrote the story of nature. It taught us to see as earth and each other as something that we to dominate instead of somebody that we should belong to or care for. of somebody that we should belong to or care for. The fight for decolonization is the fight to unlearn this lie and rebuild our relationship with the planet and with each other. George Collins said, "Don't just teach your children to read, teach them to question what they're reading. Teach them to question everything." The value of education is not the learning of many facts, but the training of the mind on how to think. Why did you vote no Indigenous Peoples' Day? Am I fighting for freedom, or am I fighting for privilege? Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, ma'am.
Peace, council.
The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Robert Williams.
Good evening, everybody, mayor, city council people. Yes, I'm here again by my rent. That's not, I'm here to get help, but I'm not getting none, but everybody else is, and why is that? Is it the color of my skin, or it's the way I behave? I'm going to be me. I don't sugarcoat nothing. My mama told me, speak my mind, and that's how I do it. I don't care how you feel, because I know you don't feel, you care about me. Now, those that do, I appreciate your help, and like that, I give a thousand percent, you give me a thousand percent. Today, as of today, I owe $785.33, and why is this? Now, everybody else that stay, that's staying in these hotels right now ain't paying nothing, and they get in the crib, once they get, find their place to stay, they're not paying for a whole year. But soon as I get proof of my SSI, I get cut off. First, uh, I don't get the crib for a whole year. The first one they took me to was with another sex offender. This fool, we had issues in the joint, and we didn't like each other, and I let it be known. And he got in my business, and I told him, mine is business. All he used to do is sit in his chair at the Red Roof Inn and watch what goes on. Now, Shannon and, uh, Newman, they didn't know this, they took me to this apartment. And the house ain't even fixed, they still working on the house. The backyard, ain't even no backyard, trees up here, they got all kind of tools and, uh, gizmos in the backyard, you can't even see, you can't even walk through it. And then it's right there by the train station, and right there by the main street. I just got through two during 25 years, and you can ask anybody. That's all I hear, every day is trains. I don't want to be behind a train. Now, since y'all gonna make me spend my money, then I should be able to accept what I want. You know, y'all ain't helping me, but y'all getting everybody else apartment for a whole year. But they have a policy, they got the rules and regulation, but y'all ain't gave me none of them rules and regulations, but y'all still playing for these people win, right now, as I speak. And then Sean, he's my guy, son, but this side of the day, I'm going at you, dawg, 'cause you-
It's alright.
Hey, it's, I know it is. Like I said, I speak my, uh, Ms. Nori, uh, Nori, you, you gonna be somebody, you need to step up your game, too. Now, this man, you told this man, him and Roy Williams, to talk to me, set up with me. We ain't never done that. You know what I'm saying? How can I go somewhere if I don't get the support? How can I give support if I don't get none? Now, I got a $785. Shannon, she, I guess what I said last week must have hit home about me not having been able to invite my people here, because this is not my town. I don't have no house to take them to. You know what I'm saying? That's, that's messed up. I don't even have an address, but I'm a resident. You know what I'm saying? But y'all want my vote. Y'all ain't worth for a vote, especially you, 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 and you. Yeah, don't forget you. And, uh, Mayor, uh, I appreciate if you can help me with this situation. I get, yeah, I get a check once a month, which I just started, but ain't nobody paying my rent. All I'm asking y'all to do, whoever want to help me, is pay my first month and my deposit. I'll take it from there, but I haven't been able to do that, because as soon as I got my SSI, they start making me pay my rent. But they, right now, it's four, five people standing over here where I'm at, ain't paying nothing, getting disability. What kind of shit is that?
Uh, Alderman Gregory, did you want to say something?
I, I, I just want to, you know, let you know, like I told you before, our community relations director, when you came up there the last time with your bill, when it was only $300, he went and got permission from our mayor, and not only paid the $300, but he paid another week, it was $900 and something dollars, brother. So, so hear me out, hear me out, because you had your chance to speak. So, so, so now-
$100.
Because you don't like anything, you're not in the programs, we can't get them to do it, Robert. I can't make them do it. Nobody can make them do it if you not going to be cooperative, and I'll say it till I'm blue in the face. I get it, right?
Right.
Boy, 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 I can tell you, I can understand that we want to live in, in, in something, man, I, I get it. Trust me, I get it, that you want to live in something that you always dreamed of. I hear you. But listen, listen to me, if you want this help, this $1,200 of the first month rent and all this good stuff, then you have to work with people. You can't always tell us what you thinking, because we calling people, we're, we're trying to get you help, Robert. And everywhere we go, they like, well, we trying, but he don't want this, he don't want that. And then you come up here, and then we don't respond, because we really don't want to get in this back and forth with you and just help you. But I cannot let you come up here and paint this false narrative like we not trying to help you. You hear me out?
Yeah, I heard you. Can I respond? Can I respond this? Can I respond to this? Thank you. Uh, you said they paid $900. That's not true. I, every time I borrow a receipt up here, where I ain't seen it, every time I borrow each receipt-
Mr. Williams, if you'll slide over, Director Posey's here, so he can speak to that. He's standing right next to you.
I know, yeah, I'm not disputing that. I'm saying, I ain't seen, but I brought all my receipts up here, man, and he got his.
Let's hear from Director Posey, could we please? Director Posey, would you like to go ahead and speak?
I'm sorry, so, I, I also cannot let this narrative go by, because Alderman Gregory has constantly been in contact with me about making sure we did anything we could for Mr. Williams. When you came up and said you owed $356 on that Tuesday night, I went at 9:00 in the morning to the hotel, we paid that $356, plus the cost of another full week, and we haven't done that for anybody else. No one else who's in that hotel is funded in any way by us or by the city. That was an unlimited amount of emergency funds that was okayed by the mayor to be spent. I signed that receipt, and I can copy and send it to every member of the city council. I signed that receipt at 9:14 a.m. I sent a text message informing Alderman Gregory at 9:15 a.m. He responded to me at 2:17 that afternoon and has called me since. I know he and I, every time we're here at a meeting, have spoken to you. I know Alderman Williams has spoken to you outside of here. Yes, yes, we have. And I also know that unlike a lot of people who would love that opportunity, you've been presented with opportunities to have a place to live and have determined that they were not up to your standards. So if that is the case, if us paying bills as a city to try and help you out, if Alderman going out of their way to try and assist you is not up to your standard, if the opportunities for shelter and housing and home that are presented to you are not up to your standard, then my suggestion would be go to another body like the county or somewhere else and ask them, because, sir, with all due respect, we have gone above and beyond to try and do everything that we can for you. And in Black History Month, I'm not going to let you throw these other two black men or myself under the bus, when we've gone above and beyond for you in a way that we have not done for everybody else, and I will not let you throw our mayor under the bus, because she authorized us to do it. So at a point in time, there has to be a level of personal accountability that has to be taken by you yourself, because there, as we, as has been noted, there are hundreds of individuals in this community who would love that opportunity, who have not been blessed with it, and for you to not be appreciative of it is, is a reflection on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Posey. The next person signed up to speak is Bree Roberts.
Just like last week, I am still formally requesting the use of the front-facing camera angle during these meetings. There are still viewers at home that use reading lips, observing body language, and interpreting facial expressions to fully understand what is being communicated, and the use of changing the angle of the cameras to stop showing the public reactions as only a punishment to the viewers at home. Frank McNeil is not just a name in Springfield history, he is a testament to what real leadership, real qualifications, and real dedication to the people look like. He fought against the unjust, at-large voting system that silenced black voices and won a federal lawsuit that led to the creation of a ward-based representation in Springfield. Without his work, Ward Two and the ability for black and minority communities to have representation would not exist as it does today. He served on the city council, ensuring that those who had been historically ignored finally had a voice. His community engagement spans decades, from NAACP to mentorship programs, and his impact is undeniable. And yet again, we have watched as men like Frank McNeil, black men and women, people of color, have had to be four times as qualified to even be considered for the same opportunities freely handed to their white counterparts. Let's talk about Jeffrey Cox, the current mayor's pick for Ward One. His experience includes serving on a volunteer board for Springfield Lakeshore Improvement Associations, working in cannabis compliance, and a stint as an assistant state attorney. He's not without experience, and I don't want to take that from him, however, when you compare the depth of service and history of advocacy and the direct impact that McNeil has had on Springfield's governance, the contrast is stark. What we are witnessing is a pattern that I am continuously bringing to light, one deeply woven into the fabric of America and Springfield's decision-making process. Unqualified or underqualified white people being given the benefit of the doubt, handed leadership roles while black men and women must fight legal battles, jump through hurdles, and prove themselves over and over again just to even be considered. This is not about just one appointment, it's about a larger deliberate effort to erase diversity, equity, and inclusion from the government. As it's already been mentioned, and I'm sure you guys are aware, the erasure of the DEI from our current president is currently happening, and it's not going to be beneficial to Springfield local government if we don't do what we can to make sure we reinforce our own DEI practices. The same DEI initiatives that were meant to level the playing field are now being stripped away, and it is causing people like McNeil and others to no longer have a fair shot. And what happens when you remove the DEI? Situations like this, where we revert back to a system where the most qualified individuals, regardless if they happen to be black, or a woman, or LGBT, or whatever, are overlooked in favor of the familiar, the comfortable, and frankly, frankly, the white. So I ask this council, what message are we sending today? The decades of public service, legal victories, and community leadership is still not enough for you to be considered in a role? That no matter how much you do, how much you achieve, how much you prove yourself, someone with a fraction of your experience can still be chosen over because of name, because of ethnicity, or because who they know? This just aligns with this dismantling of the DEI, and it seems like the council is against diversity when situations and decisions are made like this. Equity and inclusion is something that our government should reflect. These are values that we claim to uphold, such as fairness, experience, and genuine leadership, but we ignore them and we continue to repeat history. And if we do not stand against the erasure of qualified leaders, again, regardless if they are black, women, LGBT, disabled, whatever they are, we are going to be not shocked when we find ourselves back in an era where representation is not, or was a privilege and not a right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all we have signed up to speak.
Admissed adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.[1793.99]